Good evening. I'll now call the City of Cannon Falls City Council Meeting for Tuesday, June the 17th. The order. Roll call.
Councilmember Duncan.
Here.
Johnson. I'm just going down the line. I remembered his first, so you're next.
Here, I think. I'm not too sure.
Holst.
Yep.
Mattson.
Here.
McCusker.
Yeah.
Showbloom is absent, and Mayor Robinson.
Here. All please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome to the City Council Meeting. At this time, the Chair will take a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
So moved.
I second.
And a motion by Merrell, a second by Bill, to approve the agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. That moves us on to public input this morning, this evening. Citizens may speak to issues not on the agenda. Before speaking, please give your name and address for the minutes, and please limit your comments to three minutes. Is there anyone that wishes to address the council under public input? Seeing as there are no folks here to do that, we'll move on to Item 6, which is Presentations. First one will be the 2013 Audit by Abdo Ikken-Meyers.
Perfect. Good evening, Council. Mayor. Kevin Knopik and myself will do the presentation tonight. Kevin, I'm the partner in charge, and for a while now Kevin has been the manager in charge of the audit and running the audit in the field. So I do come out and help for part of the time, but Kevin is primarily the one in charge. So we're going to kind of tag-team the presentation tonight. So what should have in front of you are two reports. One's the audit report with the financial statements in it themselves, and the other document is our management letter. That looks like this with the cover, and primarily we'll be going through that management letter. If there's any specific questions you have, you may need to open up the audit report itself, but everything in the management letter is really just a high-level summary of what's in the report. So if you open up that management letter, the first page of that just outlines our responsibility in performing the audit, and that is to give an opinion on your financial statements in accordance with general accepted accounting principles. We are giving you a clean opinion, or unmodified opinion is what it's called, on your financial statements, and it's the opinion you're looking for when you have the, an audit performed. So that's good news. Part of arriving at that opinion, we'll look at your internal controls to design our tests of how we're going to test the different account balances. We're not required to give any opinion on those, or we're not hired to give an opinion on those internal controls, but if there's something within the controls of the city that we feel should be brought to your attention, those would be listed in our management letter. So one of the control issues on Page 2 is, or Page 2, the preparation of the financial statements, which is the finding that you've had in prior years as well. It's just a matter of somewhat of an internal control thing, as well as, well, the same person giving us the information to prepare the financial statements and go perform the audit, is the same person that's reviewing the financial statements. So there's a lack of segregation of duties there, as well as putting the financial statements together in their entirety. So part of that is including with the financial statements, the numbers themselves, as well as the note disclosures. And we go through a checklist that's probably, what, 80 pages long of the different standards that relate to your financial statements to make sure everything's in there. So this is just to outline, it's our, or to distinguish the responsibility between the management and us as auditors. It's our, it's our job to give an opinion on the financial statements. It's management's job to prepare the financial statements, however we do it, and this is a common finding in cities your size. So nothing to be alarmed at here, just be aware. The second one, material audit adjustments. Once we came in to start performing the audit, there were three material audit adjustments that we had to make. Those are listed here. One was related to tower lease payments from MediaCom. You hadn't received payments from them, or receipts from them since 2005. Those were all caught up and received in 2013, so those had to be recorded as a prior period adjustment. So that was one of the items. The FEMA, or the federal disaster aid received from 2012 expenditures. Those was received all in 2013, had not been set up as receivable the previous year, so we had to record that as revenue this year, or it was recorded as revenue this year, as well as some infrastructure in the utility funds that was purchased but not set up as an asset. So those were the three entries. Don't expect these going forward discussed, and really no concerns going forward with those entries, but they were found as part of the audit. The next page, Page 3. First, the first paragraph is related to compliance. We're required, the state auditor requires us to perform different tests related to state statutes and make sure you're following state statutes based on the checklist they say that we need to test as part of our financial statement audit. We are not reporting any findings related to those statutes. We didn't find anything inconsistent with state statutes in this year. So good news with the compliance testing. The rest of it's just kind of some standard language all the way to Page 4. At the bottom of Page 4, we get into the, starting with the results of the general fund. Some of the narrative is there, but on Page 5 is the charts. I think it's a little easier to look at the charts and explain the charts, so if you just turn to Page 5. The first part of that on the top shows your fund balance compared to the following year's budget. And here, where you have, you have 2.2 million in your total fund balance at the end of 2013, where your general fund budget for '14 is 2.9, so you have about a 76% in reserve for the following year. You want to stay around that, or you want to stay at the minimum around that 50% range, because you do receive majority of your revenues from the LGA, which is halfway, LGA payment, as well as your tax payment. So those are received halfway through the year, every, about every six months. So you want to have about 50% reserve to get you that next large payment.
Why do you guys recommend that much?
Why do we recommend that much?
Yeah, I mean, is that because of the bonding and stuff? It looks better. I mean, basically, when we talk budget, I always say that, you know, whatever, why can't we get by with a 45% reserve? Because we're actually taxing for that extra 5%, 6%. But then, on the other hand, if we, if our bond rating is bad, then, then we lose it on that end, so.
You're losing interest, yeah. Yeah, 50% is a healthy fund balance, comfortable. You want to, I mean, if you get below the 35%, that's where you kind of start to get worried. But in between 35 and 50, it's, it's a decent fund balance. You're at 76% right now. I mean, you're, if you look at the paragraph below, we take a look over the summer and gather other cities of your size and compare your fund balance compared to others, and the average for cities your size is 76% total fund balance. So you're right at the average of cities your size. But again, 35 to 50% is a healthy fund balance for your general fund. Yep. And you can see from 2012, it decreased from 102 down to 76%, but that related to, if you look on the next page, the cities, the share of the cost for the Highway 52 project. You paid about 1.4, 1.5 million dollars out of the general fund for that project. So this page shows your total budgeted number, budgeted revenues and expenditures compared to your actual. So you can see your revenues came in $116,000 over what you'd budgeted, and expenditures were 1.0, almost 1.6. Again, you did not budget for that, even though you had the money in your reserves to pay out that share of your interchange, of the interchange project. That wasn't something that's budgeted. So that's, that's why this amount over your budget looks like you spent way over your budget. But it was related to that, which you did have in your reserves, and you were planning for that. So that's what's accounting for that. Transfers in, you did transfer some money in from your TIF funds, really, that also helped pay for that interchange project, or was part of that project payment. So overall, fund balance, you can see your net change, four lines up, decreased 759, but then you had that prior period adjustment, 137. So had a, had a net decrease of about $600,000. But again, you planned for that with the interchange payment. The next two pages, your revenues and expenditures shown by source for the last three, comparison to the last two years. So we took you, take a look at Page 7, your revenues. Total revenues in 2011 were just over 3 million. Then in 2013, they're 3.6 million. A lot of that was the transfer in, again, related to the project. So you transferred in 500,000, just over $500,000 this year. So if you took out that $500,000, you were, only went up probably about 100 or 200,000 dollars in this timeframe for your revenues. Same time period, your tax revenue went from just under, or was 1.9 million, 2013, that's 1.8. So about a 6% decrease in your tax collections in your general fund. Part of that had to do with a decrease in your levy for your general fund operating levy. Okay. Page 8, your expenditures over the same period. Here, we have a peer group number at the end, so this compares a peer group per capita. So we take a look at your total expenditures divided by your number of, or your population, and compare that to the peer group that we gathered the data for over the summer. So you can see in total, if you look at your total current, the capital and debt service and transfers, those are somewhat fluctuate, can fluctuate from state to city. But if you look at your total current, your per capita current expenditures in general fund is 600, just under $650. Your peer group's at 515. So your general fund current expenditures are higher than, on average, than your, than the peer group. You can see where that's coming from. Your general government, 176, compared to your peer group at 125. Public safety, 205, is actually lower than your peer group at 218. Public works is higher, 162 to 106. Culture and recreation's higher, and the miscellaneous is about even. So that's kind of how you compare to the peer group. Page 9. If anyone has any questions, feel free to, just let me know.
Down the bottom, you got down the Highway 52 interchange and the pedestrian bridge.
That, yep, that is.
That's a pedestrian bridge.
That was part of the project. It was included in that project. Page 9, special revenue funds. Top of Page 9, your special revenue funds. You got the library, cable, TV, and your fire department. Special revenue funds are, are funds that are set up where it has either restricted revenue or committed revenue source, so that are specific, that have to be spent on a specific purpose. So your library decreased 44,000 in fund balance this year, had some capital expenditures in the library fund. Cable TV, above break-even, increased 7,000 bucks, and fire department operations came out of a deficit and has 11,000, just under $12,000 fund balance this year.
That 44,000 in the library, now, was that, was that expenditures, or was that because it wasn't, it was down here and not in the new library yet? Was the income down in the library itself, or has that stayed about the same?
Do you want to answer that? You did have $71,000 of capital outlay out of the library fund this year.
Did that come out of this fund?
Yep.
Most of that decrease is related to some capital expenditures related to a library project. If you look overall, I believe there wasn't much, I could be wrong, maybe you'll know, could correct, but the, as far as the revenue and the current expenditures, I believe stayed pretty, pretty consistent, so.
The library did purchase some furniture and stuff for their new building, and that did come out of this fund.
Okay. So it didn't affect much by having it down here for that year and before we moved up there and stuff?
No, that was mostly in 2012, because they moved out of here in February of 2013. So the 2013 wouldn't have reflected any of that, or much of that.
Thank you.
Okay, and underneath that, your capital project funds. So these are the, the project funds you have, money set aside, or money set aside for these projects. So you can see your 2013 east side improvement project listed there first, ended fund balance with $190,000. You did, you did, that was an increase for the previous year, where you had some initial expenses, but then you bonded this year, brought the money in, and then these, this is the leftover, or money to finish the project, $190,000. Other projects are listed below. You can see, most of them have positive fund balances, which is good. The police capital is in a deficit of 7,100, but it is improved from the previous year by 5,200. The other two or three funds here, the 2011 West Side Construction, the Library Construction Fund, and the Highway 20 Clinic Access Road. Each one of those are going to have to identify, or have a plan to get those out of deficit going forward. As part of the budget process, it's a good time to talk about these deficits and how they're going to be funded going forward. Page 10, debt service funds. So these are all the governmental bonds you have outstanding. We take a look at total cash, total assets, and then the bond outstanding. Total assets and total liabilities, you can see your liabilities are a lot higher than your assets. That's because you are collecting taxes that we don't show as receivable yet. So those will be levied in the future to help support a lot of these bonds. So, but each one of these have positive cash balances. Just recommend that, and I know Lanelle does, project these out to the end to make sure you're going to have sufficient resources if you need to adjust your levies accordingly. It's better to do that sooner than later. But you do have, one of these bonds did already fall off in March of 2014. You'll have another bond, the next one listed, will fall off in 2015. So then you got a bit of a break between the, the next ones that'll be falling off. But those two bonds look like they'll have sufficient revenues. Then I'll have Kevin start in with the enterprise funds, and these will be your, these are your, like, your water sewer or store, those type of funds. So Kevin will kind of go on those. And we did add some different charts this year, so he'll kind of go explain what those look like from previous years.
All right, so starting on Page 11, we're beginning with your water fund. The top chart is going to represent kind of the cash flows for the enterprise funds. It summarizes your operating costs, your operating receipts, and then any other cash that's come in, or any other cash that's gone out. So by looking at the above chart, you can see that the blue line has been above the gray bar for the past four years, which means your operating, our receipts have covered your operating costs of the fund. And that, and also note that part of your operating receipts, the blue bar, has covered part of the green bar, which is debt service payments required out of the water fund. And then to buffer with the offset to help pay the rest of those debt payments, the orange bar represents some connection fees, some special assessments in the fund to help pay those debt service payments. One thing to note, just from the top, in 2010, there was a big orange bar with some bond proceeds, and then 2011, there was a big green bar for a lot of debt payments. A bond was refunded in 2010, and then paid off in 2011. And that correlates to the gray bar on the bottom chart, which was cash set And that correlates to the, the gray bar on the bottom chart, which was cash set aside to pay those debt payments in two thousand eleven. You can see from the bottom graph that the cash is above a minimum target balance. We've established kind of a minimum balance of two months' worth of operating costs, followed by the next year's debt service payments as a, as kind of a balance that was should be there to meet your operating and debt payments. And then anything kind of above that red line is kind, is there for any future capital needs. One thing to note, that the cash balance has decreased about thirty-eight hundred and forty thousand from two thousand eleven, but the cash balance is still healthy in that fund. Just to note that, it's just more of a, more of a graphic to, you know, look and see where the balance is and project out, you know, three, five years down the road, and make sure you're charging enough rates to meet those debt payments and any future capital costs in that fund.
Is there a chart that gives the reserve, what's in that water fund for reserve?
That, this chart for, so like, two thousand thirteen, it's a one point, it's just a little bit over one million. That is the total cash as of the, as of the end of two thousand thirteen that's in that fund.
Okay.
Is that, is that what you're referring to, is the total, the reserve of cash?
Yeah. Yeah, so that's, that's the cash, yeah, so that's the total cash in the fund. On the next page, we'll go over to disposal fund. Again, I'm looking at the top graph. The blue bar's been above the gray bar, so the operating receipts are above the operating costs for a fund. And it kind of same for the water fund, where the special assessments and connection fees have helped cover the debt service payments, this is the green bar. You can see that the cash balance is just under seven hundred thousand. That's something to monitor with the large debt that's in the fund. The table below it, there's about seven point seven million in the fund. So again, just to look at that cash balance, make sure that there's, that the rates are sufficient to be covering your debt payments going forward and any future capital needs. And one positive note, the cash did increase roughly ninety thousand from two thousand twelve, so it's going in the right direction. Ambulance fund, not too much to say here. The operating receipts have covered operating costs the past four years. The big, the big decrease from two thousand ten to two thousand eleven in cash was due to the purchase of ambulance, of a new ambulance, so. And from there, you can see the cash has therefore increased. A lot of the fluctuation in this fund kind of depends on the amount of calls that they receive and the amount, so, and the amount they collect, so kind of varies on the amount, amount of activity the ambulance has. Stormwater fund, looking at the top chart, you can see there's been, the red, the red bar's been pretty high the past three years. This represents some capital improvements in the stormwater fund. The city has issued some bonds in two thousand eleven and two thousand thirteen to help offset some of those costs with the, with the capital. But you can see that the cash balance in that fund is only about twenty-eight hundred bucks. So something to consider and look to, look at that fund to make sure the rates are sufficient and for any future capital costs that are going to be coming forward. And just to note that the debt service payment for that fund in two thousand fourteen is about twenty-seven thousand, so that's something to be aware of.
Why did that one drop off so much?
That one dropped off, if, I would point you to the top chart, you can see the red bar is, is pretty high, and then the orange, the orange bar represents a, a bonds that are issued. So you issued some bonds in two thousand thirteen to help cover the costs of that project, but the costs of the project were more than what was bonded for. So therefore, you had cash come in from the bonds that were issued, but the costs outweighed what was, what was issued for that fund. So then had to use cash reserves to help pay those costs in the fund.
So you're saying, because of the low cash amount we have, we may want to look at our storm water rates because we are using them for these various infrastructure projects?
It's, it's one thing to look at. I mean, rates isn't going to be, the, rates you have to look at more as a long term because you just can't, you know, significantly increase those rates and see a big, you know, change. It's going to be gradual over time. There's one thing to cut, with the point out, with two thousand eleven, the orange bar was, but, bonds, bonds issued. The red bars from two thousand eleven to two thousand twelve related to that, those bonds issued, and the costs outweighed those bond proceeds that were dedicated, that were put for that fund. And then the same thing happened again in two thousand thirteen, where the costs outweighed what was bonded for. So therefore, the reserves in that fund and cash have, has significantly decreased from two thousand eleven.
If you take a look at your, your operating receipts, the blue bars, at your operating expenses, the green, you're definitely, your rates are definitely covering your operating costs. It's just that additional capital where there, you're missing something. Yeah, so if, if you got some significant project costs, if more project coming forward, you may want to look at some different funding sources, but if you don't have any projects coming up, you're going to have, see some, some decent increases in your cash based on the operating.
Because I know we, we tend to, we are looking at another project in two thousand fifteen, so.
Yeah, but we did use some of that money, though, to fund those other projects too, though, didn't we?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we used some of that for the other two projects, so that's why that fund is so far down at this point until we can-
What does that build up a year if you don't take anything out of it? Is there a certain percentage that it builds up every year? I mean, if you went five years and didn't have any major project, what would that number be then?
Um, I could give you a rough estimate, just taking, if you look at the-
Look at the, oh, it's not.
Yeah, it's a, now I gotta look back here. So if you look at the storm from, for two thousand thirteen, you brought in about a hundred and forty-four thousand of revenue from, from customers, so charges, you're charging customers. Payments for suppliers and employees in the fund totaled about fifteen thousand. So the net cash provided by operating was about a hundred and thirty thousand. Now, so that would be net cash there, but you are going to have some debt payments going forward, and the debt payments for two thousand thirteen, including the principal and interest, were about twenty-three thousand. So if you just take into operating and the debt payments that you're going to have with the fund, probably right around a hundred thousand is what it, is what it looks like from two thousand thirteen would have been the result. If you took out any of the, the capital and the, and the debt. Just eyeballing two thousand twelve, it looks, looks about the same, right around a hundred thousand, take away the capital.
Right.
So really, they, so if you look at it that way, your, the operating costs, or what you're charging customers is sufficient to cover the costs and the debt payments, it was really the capital in the fund that's really brought to, brought that cash balance Next page, on page fifteen, the deputy register fund. Main goal of this fund is, you know, is break even. The last two years, the fund has transferred out about twenty-five hundred dollars to a general fund, so nothing more to say about that fund. Recycling fund, you can see from the top chart that the blue bar's been above the gray bar, so that fund is self-sustaining. The operating receipts have been covering the, operating costs for that fund. You can see that in two thousand ten, on the chart below, there was a deficit cash balance, but now the fund has a healthy fund balance of just under forty-five thousand. The next page, page seventeen, is some ratios that we've compiled for, in the peer group. We request information from the Office of the State Audit and compile that information. So the blue numbers represent the city, the cities' percentages, and then the red numbers represent the peer group average. So cities are similar size. Two thousand thirteen, you're going to see an N A there, just because the two thousand thirteen reports haven't been, we haven't received those yet. So it's always this kind of lag in a year for your peer group average. And there's a couple things to note with the debt service coverage. You can see that the city's been right around eighty, eighty-five percent the past three years. Peer group average has been about a hundred and six percent. Going back to kind of how we looked at the enterprise funds, you want that percentage to be a hundred percent, meaning that your operating receipts are covering your operating costs and your debt payments. This most relates to sewer fund and water fund where you're using special assessments and connection fees to help cover those debt payments, and those revenues aren't shown in, in this, this, this percentage. The debt per capita, you can see, has been, is about five thousand for two thousand thirteen, was decreased about two hundred and sixty from two thousand twelve. It's above the peer group average. This most relates to this, the projects that have been going on in cities and the debt that's been taken out to help fund those projects. That also kind of correlates to taxes per capita right below it. Taxes, you can see, are at five hundred and fifty thousand dollars per person in the city. Peer group in two thousand twelve was four eighty, so again, the taxes per person, a little bit higher to help fund those costs for those debt service payments. And then going to page nineteen, this, we summarize any future accounting standards that are going to have to be implemented in future years. There are some coming up, Gatsby sixty-eight, that will have some impact for the city that will have to be implemented till the two thousand fifteen audit. And our firm continuously monitors these new standards and will help, help the city implement these standards as they become due. That kind of wraps up what we had to go over. We'd be happy to answer any questions on what we went over, anything, any other, or any other questions you have maybe on the financial report.
What was the final number that we ended up with as far as the end of the year balance? Were we negative or were we positive? Till last year, it was like sixty-six thousand for the year. Is there a number like that that says what we ended up at?
So the amount, like, the general fund increased or decreased?
Well, the-
That's why you're asking?
The total of extra revenue for what we allow for expenditures. I know last year, we got all down to a sixty-six thousand extra that we actually had left over for the total year. So is there a number like that?
Um, I believe what you're asking is for, like, where the revenues and expenses came in compared to budget.
Right.
If you go to page six of the management letter, I believe the number you're looking for is in the far right column with the variance of final budget. And it's a one point four eight one.
Page six?
Yep, page six of the management letter.
Final budget?
Is that the number you're-
Yeah, it's a deficit this year. It may, it, I don't recall, but it could have been a positive number last year, but this year, you had that, that payment out for the interchange project, but that's something that isn't part of the budget process, it wasn't part of your budget, you just had it in your fund balance reserve. So you planned on spending that down and you did not, it wasn't part of the budget.
Right.
So we, to get at, assuming this is where that number came from, you're talking about last year, we'd have to back that, that payment out. So if we back that payment out, if you look at the bottom, is that one point four? Back that out, about a hundred thousand dollar over budget, so you're about a break even as far as your, just your revenues and expenditures. Your revenues were a hundred and sixteen over, your expenditures were a hundred, about a hundred over as well. If we're taking out the interchange.
Yeah, so where's the number then? What's the number?
I think it, I think-
Sixteen?
Just some, yeah, about sixteen.
And the negative or the positive?
Looks to be a positive.
Okay. Well, I, I just, you know, when Aaron used to be here, I haven't broke Ron in yet, but I always use this Irish math, you know? And there's about five numbers that I'm concerned about all year, and one of them is that number where we end up at the end of the year. And hopefully, that's always a little positive instead of a hundred thousand short. So that's just one number I'm concerned about.
Yep.
You're, you're talking about budget versus actual.
Right.
Budget versus actual.
Right.
Right.
Okay.
So, appreciate it.
And those are just rough numbers, um, so I, that's pretty close to, I think, is the number you're looking for.
Anybody else? Well, thank you guys for coming in and doing another audit. I mean, we know where we've got to, where we've got to look at, and as budget season's coming in to play, I know we'll be starting that process here pretty quick. So we'll have a lot of things to look at and we'll see where we can go from there.
Thanks, thanks for your business.
Thanks a lot.
Okay, and-
Mayor, if we could get a motion by the council to accept the report as presented?
We have a motion by Merle.
I'll second that.
And a second by Bill to approve the auditor's report. All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose?
Thank you.
And Senator Schmidt is not here right now, so we're going to move on to the consent agenda. Items on this area of the agenda may be adopted or they may be removed and placed on the business area of the agenda for discussion purposes before approving. We will read the consent agenda for those at home. Item A is the just and correct claims for the accounting period ending June the thirteenth, two thousand fourteen. Item B are the meeting minutes for the June third, two thousand fourteen city council meeting. Item C is the award of the Second Street Southwest Water Main Project. Item D is introduction and first reading of ordinance three thirty-eight, amending chapter one eleven of the Cannon Falls City Code concerning alcohol licenses and regulations. Are there any items anybody wishes to bring down? If not, Chair will take the motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted.
So moved.
I'll second.
Have a motion by Merle and a second by Bill. All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose? Carries. That moves us on to council business. The finance report for the three hundred and eighteenth Street Improvement Project and Second Street Southwest Street Water Main Project. You have the floor.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor of the City Council. I'm George Ayletson from Northland Securities, and I'd like to direct you to, in your packet, there's a, a finance plan summary that I'll overview and then answer any questions you may have. If I could direct you to what would be the page two of that document. And there's two projects that the city is considering with this financing, and that is, the first being three hundred and eighteenth Street. And these are, I'll just back up for just a moment, these are both preliminary numbers. I, I know that on your agenda tonight, award of the water portion of Second Street Southwest. So a little fine tuning needs to be done on, on some of this, certainly. There's the street portion that hasn't been bid on Second Street Southwest yet, so, so again, keep in mind preliminary numbers. But the first project, three hundred and eighteenth Street, and the second project, Second Street Southwest. The first project, three hundred and eighteenth Street, I say it's, in this overview, a hundred percent of that project is being assessed to benefiting property owners. And with a little clarification there, a vast majority of that project is assessed to Mayo as well as to other businesses, and then there's a balance that's, if you will, a levy percentage or a small levy portion for the city. So that's how three hundred and eighteenth Street is financed. That's a ten-year assessment agreement that you've got with the local businesses at five percent for the interest rate on the special assessments. On Second Street Southwest, that's broken up into a water project as well as the street portion of that project. The water portion of that project to be paid back by the water utility, like the auditor said, try to have that as a self-sufficient utility, and that's, the intent here is that the water, the revenues generated by the water utility would pay that portion of the project, which is about half or forty-eight percent of, of that project. The balance, then, the other fifty-two percent is a combination of twenty percent being assessed to the benefiting property owners, and then the balance as a tax levy over all, all taxable property citywide. So the combination of these two projects, or the total of these two projects, roughly three hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. So a, you know, when we talk about east side and the west side projects, those are relatively large projects, two-plus million dollars. Those are the type that we go out and get your bond rating in place, put a competitive financing bid together. financing bid together with national investment banks. That's one that, you know, certainly is a little bit different story. What we're looking at or recommending to you is, is a local bond sale, one that we feel this would be right in the sweet spot for a lot of the local banks within the county. And so this being an overall 10-year financing term, to put together the most efficient financing for the city, we felt, let's do it as a local sale amongst the banks within the county. And then we wouldn't pay for a bond rating fee, the bonds would be issued done and rated. One of the key elements there is that the bond rating, to get the bond rating assigned, is approximately $7,000 on such a small financing, that's something that probably wouldn't benefit the city. We can also eliminate some of the traditional financing costs by doing it this way. We can eliminate what's called the paying agent. That would be who sends you your invoice when you make a semi-annual bond payment. The city would serve as the paying agent. As well, there wouldn't be an investment bank that would be the ultimate purchaser, it would be a local bank. So there's some savings there as well. So that's our recommendation, is that at a mid-July meeting, that, your second meeting in July, that we would take financing bids during the day and come back in the evening and present those to you. And I'll make it short here so that the senators can get up for comments, but, but again, that's what we would look to, is mid-July sale, come back, present those financing bids to you on July 15th. The city would receive the funding approximately August 1st. Any questions the city council may have?
I had questions for, I think, Ron. I didn't get a chance to call you today about this. I guess what I kind of lost at is, I thought the 318th project was a self-supporting project. Why do we end up with all this extra money? The Second Street project, from the bids I seen, wasn't at around 70,000. And I know it was brought up once, probably people didn't agree with it, but I kind of thought the 70,000 should have been pulled out of the sewer water fund reserve. So I guess I've kind of lost why we're doing this financing bonding in the first place.
Okay. First of all, it's a, it's a proposal to you. I talked to George about potential funding sources for these two projects. 318th, you're right, just as George mentioned, that most of it will be covered by special assessments. However, we don't get paid right up front for the special assessments. I would say probably 90 to 95% even of that project is actually special assessment revenue, which will be paid back to us over time, but it's not an immediate payback. So we will need to come up with the money. And, you know, we could look at other options in-house too, but this would be one way of going.
And those are 10-year assessments, correct? With the
Yeah, I think so, right? Dave?
Is it 10-year on this? Lots of times they're 15, aren't they?
Well, we could structure the bond issue to be 10-year.
Okay.
George, correct? I mean, to match the payback on the special assessments.
Okay. So do all three of them plan on using the whole 10 years? Is that the deal?
It's in the agreement that they have the option. I don't know if, you've had a discussion, Dave?
Some verbal conversations I expect that will have at least one party with prepayment.
Okay.
But it's not going to be enough to cover the financing.
Right. So is there, is there any kind of timeframe? We know that, or we still have to do all this bonding anyway? I mean, if somebody comes in and it pays off their end of it, if it's one of the big ones, then we're still spending this money or whatever we're doing to get the bonding. So we need to do this, in other words, to pay the bills on time is the reason we're doing this?
Correct. And, you know, we could look, I could talk to George and Lenell some more about some in-house inter-fund transfers or something like that, in, you know, with that in mind that these would be paid back. You know, we don't have to levy for that full amount because of the special assessments, assuming the special assessments are paid timely.
Right.
But then the second week, Second Street Southwest project is actually two components. There's the water, Water Main portion, which bids were, I forget right now, 60?
65.
65, something like that. You know, plus the contingencies, admin and so forth, engineering. And then the street portion, we haven't, you know, put that out yet. That's going to go through the 429 portion, but only 15 or 20% of the street portion is going to be assessed. So we could do in-house with the water fund to pay for the water portion and reduce the amount of bond in this. Or, you know, we could completely eliminate the bonds if there's ways we can figure out to do it.
Well, the one thing that I think about is, we have these reserves for things like up at the hospital when the main breaks and things like that, that you can't plan on. To me, in emergency situations, and Second Street certainly is that, I think we should use some reserves and then hopefully we don't have problems and the reserves build back up over years again. But to me, this is, if there's ever a time to use your reserves for emergency, I think it's probably on this project up here, but I just wanted to throw that out there.
One thing too that I wanted to add, and George, I guess I would need your confirmation on this, but we, if we did do local bonding for this, we could, is it possible to set it up so that if we prepay it, so that if we get assessments paid off early and we have enough money in that fund to prepay the loan without penalty, therefore we would save some interest charges, you know, at the end of that loan process?
Yes, good question, Lenell. The financing, proposed financing with a 10-year financing term, more than likely we could have a call date or that date when you can prepay without penalty. We could have that as early as, say, four years into the financing, or shorter. I mean, it depends upon which banking institution purchases the bonds, but it would be certainly friendly to the city. And, and I guess one other note, and hopefully I'm not speaking out of turn, but the, in regards to utilizing general fund reserves, for example, and I maybe should have even asked this question when the auditors were here, but Standard and Poor's, who has rated the city's bond issues in the past, has new criteria actually since you issued your last bonds. And one of the things that they, they have different benchmarks for how much general fund reserves you have. For example, if you maintain 30%, you might get credit for one notch higher. If you maintain for 70% of your general fund expenditures, considered for another notch. Now, as the auditors noted, 76% is where you ended up 2013.
Well, that's the general fund, I'm talking about sewer and water fund. They are separate, right, Ron? I mean, I remember Aaron telling me, you work time near far half million in the sewer and water fund reserve. But maybe I heard it wrong or something.
Yeah, we just went through those numbers. I'd have to look back at the book as far as the reserve, as far as cash balance.
Right. And Tom brought up the fact that we do have a water tower, we have to paint sometime the next year or two, and that was a couple hundred thousand. So I just felt it was a pretty healthy reserve and it's kind of more of an emergency, so I thought it was kind of a good fit.
Right. And I guess the point that I was trying to make was, you know, is there the ability to utilize some of your overall reserves and still maintain that 70%? With a project coming up, as you referenced, next year, that you'll certainly go back to the rating agencies for, I'd like, my recommendation certainly is if you do consider tapping into general fund reserves would be maintain 70% at this time. So if there is an amount over and above that, that might be, if you will, the amount to consider. But as Ron indicated, you know, certainly just informational tonight, this does not mean that you're, that it's in stone that you're issuing debt at your second meeting in July. Certainly if there's other avenues that staff or I can help them explore, you know, we'll certainly look at that as well.
So we don't have to make a decision tonight as just a kind of a, a general plan?
Right.
You'll go out and find from the banks what, what they might do, and then in July we would decide?
For example, we, if the consensus, consensus, I'm sorry, of the city council was, yes, George, go out, solicit quotes from the local banks, that would be the scenario where we all knew that, yes, you're going to, you're in need of financing, let's go out and solicit quotes. If that was the consensus at the council tonight, we would take financing bids July 15th. I think it sounds like there's probably the need to step back for a moment and review options.
I think so. I mean, when I started looking at this, and I received that also, I mean, I agree with Leroy. I mean, we've got to look at all our other options, I mean, to see if we can come up with the funds to pay for even half of it. I mean, would be a lot easier than trying to go in debt even further. I mean, especially if we're talking about doing 2000, I mean, doing the other side project in 2015. I mean, we can't keep borrowing, you know, you can't keep borrowing to, you know, to turn around and charge it back to everybody, because, I mean, it's getting to the point to where the debt's going to be higher than what we've got coming in. So, I mean, we're going to have to really look at this hard and see what we can do with the funds.
Well, I think that one assessment was like 6,000, wasn't it, roughly?
Yes.
And I just think that the $6,000 loan over 10 years, I don't want to put any burden on the business and I appreciate them doing this, but that's a pretty long-term investment for 6,000 bucks. So I guess I would even think of a, I mean, I would like Dave to talk to him and see if that is a big issue, otherwise do a seven or eight-year deal. I don't, I don't know. And if the Mayo system decides to pay it all off, that'll really change things for their part. So, yeah, I just, I think it's something we need to think about.
Well, Mayor, the nice, regardless of what approach you take, when you look at these two projects and you look at what is the city's share, it's not very large. That's nice. You've got, certainly on 318th Street, it's largely, as Ron indicated, maybe 5% of the overall financing cost of that is city. On the other portion, you've got the water utility covering approximately half of the project, and then the, it's the balance of that project, which is roughly $75,000. 20% of that would be assessed to the residents along that street, and then the balance would be citywide tax levy. So it's, it's overall less than $10,000 per year that the city taxes would be, or the taxpayers would be responsible for.
Ron, have we, have we determined yet, when we were discussing the street improvements on Second Street, there was some contention on whether that 20-year
Oh, yeah.
Period?
In researching that, Lenell found that the project's actually 19 years old, done in '95. So it'd be 19 years. Our assessment policy calls for a prorated, that's the service life of, here it is, it's a little bit different, it's a unique situation, because the Batuminus has a 15-year service life. The curb and gutter, however, has a 20-year service life. So the street is basically outside the service life area. The curb and gutter has one year left. So according to our assessment policy, we would prorate, so it'd be 19, 20, so it'd be the, the amount of curb and gutter we can assess, we can consider as a
Okay, so the individual assessments will go down a little bit?
Very little, yeah.
Very little.
I think Greg had figured about nine grand at worst-case scenario, if we had to pull both, if we had to pull out and replace both sides of the street with curb and gutter, which we're hoping not to have to do.
Nine grand?
That'd be if we took out all the curb on the east side and a little bit on the west where we're thinking, we'll just replace the sections where we make the six-house connection. The rest of it's in pretty good condition.
Right.
So that was the cost difference between all the curb or just the spot.
What is that? Did we get a rough idea what that breaks down for four houses?
Well, 20% of nine divided by six would be what that would be if we assessed them. 19, 20, so that.
Okay. You know, your stuff out there, don't take my questioning wrong. I, the problem is with being out here, the longer you're out here, the more you get the overall picture of the last three or four years instead of just last year. So you start thinking back about this and that, and how it all ties together. So I doubt that you're doing the right thing, you're doing a good job, I just have to ask these questions. Thank you.
No, and I'm, I'm not Irish, so I, I understand Norwegian math. Well, what I'll do, Mayor and council, is, is keep in touch with city staff and, you know, they'll give me the direction that, that you come up with in terms of, if there is the need to go out and issue debt, we can look at something like this approach. If there's other avenues to fund it internally, that will be presented to you.
Well, hopefully staff can by next, our next meeting, have some info for us?
Yeah, and keep in mind, you know, from my perspective, I'm still trying to acclimate myself to what your, your wishes are and, but one of the things that, George, and what I wanted to do is just bring the information to you so we're not, because we know, Lenell and I have spoken, you know, we know that there's going to be bills to pay come, come August, because the 318th, we should be done by, well, it's got an August 1st or July 30th completion date, and hopefully even sooner than that. But, so we're going to have some bills to pay there. So we started the dialogue, I checked with George, just wanted to throw some options out to you. One thing, George, maybe you want to touch base with council on, if we don't, if we decide not to do a bond issue for these, but figure out a way in-house, how do we fund the street portion with special assessment, considering we want, the council wants some sort of, sort of special assessment revenue?
Right. And you would still, even if you fund it internally, it was brought up earlier, the proceedings that you have to go through when you assess benefiting property owners, you would still have to go through those same steps, whether it's financed externally or internally. So certainly if there is, you know, that's something staff would have to work with Greg on to make sure that those, those are done correctly. And, and so really, that's the only thing, Ron, to just make sure you're, you're doing. One thing I might, and I know this is not on the agenda, but it might just be a motion, Mayor, and it could be certainly something for your next council meeting, is, we've done this with you in the past when you've had a project, something called a reimbursement, your, your, or intent to reimburse. It's, if you intend to reimburse yourself at a later point with the issuance of tax-exempt bonds, you should note that in your minutes. It gives you that ability to come back at a later date, issue debt and pay yourself back. Because under this scenario with bills coming in the month of August, your choice at that point is going to be utilize city reserve funds, whether it be enterprise funds or general fund dollars, to pay those bills. If you pass this reimbursement resolution, and again, you don't have a resolution in your packets tonight, but it would give you that ability to come back up to 18 months later with the issuance of bonds to pay yourself back.
That we could do at a, at a future
Yes, exactly.
Future meeting.
Right. So that, that may be in a future council packet. That doesn't mean you have to pay yourself back, it just gives you the flexibility to do so if you find the need.
I think we did that on the library, didn't we? Isn't that something that, 760,000 is sitting there till eight years or something?
Yeah.
I think we did something like that.
Yeah.
But I, I like the thing where you came up with, hopefully the local banks or somebody good, the council would work with it, because if there is a $7,000 savings there, that all helps. So I like that, that we don't have to do the audit thing or whatever that other part is you talked about.
Well, at this point, I mean, we don't have hard numbers to even know how much bonds we need to do.
That's right.
I mean, so, I mean, we'd have to wait till we get hard numbers to even go out for bids on this. I mean, I do appreciate the, you know, the proposal even go out for bids on this. I mean, I do appreciate the, you know, the proposal of how we can do it, but we need to look at all our options and see, you know, what, what we're gonna have to pay, A, and number two, and B, you know, can we pay for part of it in-house, you know, from in-house, and then maybe only have to purchase a smaller amount of bonds going forward for these small projects like this.
And I have one other point. Leroy, I'll pass it along to Aaron, that you believed everything he said.
No, I don't know if you should go with that. He always gave me that funny look, and then he'd say, "I really don't agree with you." So, it wasn't always that way.
Well, thank you, Mayor.
All right. Well, thank you.
And, thank you. We have to take a motion to approve the?
No.
Nope, nope. All right. Right. Okay. That's gonna bring us back to presentation. We have Senator Matt Schmidt here this evening. He's gonna give us a legislative update from the session that just ended up in St. Paul.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, and council members and staff. It's good to be able to join you here. Seems like just yesterday, we were recapping the 2013 legislative session. I'm not quite sure where the last year has gone. Hopefully, folks, you're like me, and you feel pretty optimistic about our future and what we've been able to accomplish and, and where we're going into the, into the future here. Just wanted to take an opportunity to, to touch base, talk a little bit about the last couple of years. I have a handout being distributed that just touches some of the highlights, the higher points here of the last couple of years. Also, wanted to provide a little bit of a, I guess, a preview of, of where I think we're going with our state budget, and also allow you to ask any questions or seek any clarification on anything we talk about tonight, or anything we don't quite get to. I guess with that said, I'd just like to take a, a step back here and look at the, the challenge that was before this legislature, when we took office about 18 months ago. We were still on that revenue roller coaster in Minnesota, that decade-long struggle with our budget, going from one kind of near-term deficit to another. And this legislature faced a $3 billion budget problem. It was a billion dollars of current biennial deficit, another billion dollars of school funding shift that still existed, and that had the, the fingerprints of Democrats and Republicans on it from years ago, but it was still lingering, that billion-dollar school shift. And then also a billion dollars of inflation that's not part of our normal budgeting process, but that weighs us down from one budget forecast to the next. And it's no secret that in 2013, we made some hard choices, and we raised revenue in Minnesota. And, and I have to tell you, because of those decisions, we were able to, to pay back that school shift, we were able to alleviate that, that current biennial deficit, and we're able to make some targeted investments in education and infrastructure that I think will pay dividends into the years ahead. Now, it's also no secret that we've got some welcome news in the last six months here in Minnesota. First, we had a, a November forecast that indicated we were over $800 million in the black. So, back in, in positive territory with a surplus rather than a deficit. And that positive news was confirmed in our February state economic forecast. That's the forecast that we use for budgeting, you know, from one budget period to the next. And that indicated a $1.2 billion surplus in Minnesota. Now, that owes itself in part to the budget decisions we made in 2013, but just as, as much it owes itself to Minnesota's, you know, strongly performing economy. We have had a, a couple of great years here as a state economy. And even though that economic growth isn't felt equally everywhere, we've been in the top five in growth in the country for each of the last two years. So, things, as a state, you know, things are going very well. And so, of that $1.2 billion surplus, there's a little chart on the upper left-hand corner, I'm sorry, upper right-hand corner of the handout. Just wanted to include that, because folks might wonder, geez, what did you do with the $1.2 billion? Well, we wanted to be first and foremost conservative and show some restraint, and make sure that we don't put ourselves in a position to be back on that revenue roller coaster and have, you know, short-term budget problems plague us again. So, what we, but we also wanted to recognize that much of that surplus came, you know, directly from taxpayers. So, what we did is approximately half of it, 45%, was returned in the form of tax cuts or, or aids to local governments to help offset property tax increases. And so, that was a $550 million essentially tax cut or tax transfer in the current biennium, another billion dollars in the, in the two years ahead. And that was, I have to tell you, that's, that's one of those votes you make and say, geez, this is a big vote. I mean, because there's a lot of money attached to that. But it was simply the right thing to do. And what that did is that allowed us to reverse course on what I think was a, one of the flaws of the 2013 session, and that was the expansion of the sales tax to include business-to-business sales taxes, like the warehouse tax and, uh, sales tax on egg equipment repair, for instance. I'll, we just gotta be frank, guys, that was not a good idea, and we kept that warehouse tax from becoming law. We reversed course on the others, and that was just the right thing to do. We also were able to better align Minnesota's tax code with the federal tax code, and we call this federal conformity. There's a whole host of examples of where that comes into play, but we want to try to give businesses and families and other tax filers as much certainty and ease in filing their taxes as possible, try to treat certain obligations the same as the federal government would. And so, that, that had a pretty hefty price tag. That was another $250 million. So, when you look at that $1.2 billion, almost half of it, 45% is tax cuts, aids to local governments. We also were able to, to put forth a supplemental budget this year, even though it's a bonding year, not a budget year. This, this surplus allowed us to, to focus on a few priorities that we just weren't able to get to in 2013. And the highlight of this supplemental budget was a 5% cost of living adjustment for home-based community care providers. And these are 92,000 Minnesota workers who provide care to developmentally disabled adults and others who seek care in long-term, you know, home-based or small-group settings. And I know Cannon Falls has a couple. Every small town in Minnesota has at least one of these. And these folks had not received a raise in nearly a decade, and there was a lot of turnover in this industry, and there's a cost associated with that turnover. And so, it, it was a, a strong bipartisan effort, and a lot of folks were behind this. And frankly, folks, it costs monies, $80 million to, to put a 5% cost of living adjustment behind these 92,000 employees in Minnesota, but it was the right thing to do. And so, that was the highlight, if you will, of that supplemental budget that, that we put forth. Another thing that I'd just like to draw your attention to, because I spent a little time on this, on the fir, bottom of the front page, it says broadband infrastructure. I am very concerned about the lack of access to high-speed internet in certain parts of rural Minnesota, and I really believe that access to, to broadband or, or high-speed internet is the equivalent of, of rural electrification. And it's so important that every Minnesota business or family or home has access to high-speed internet. About 20% of the state does not. And, and, and industry will say this, and experts will say this, that if we're gonna meet, you know, our goals of making sure that everybody has access to high-speed internet, we've got to be able to tap new, new capital. And so, what we put in place is a, a $20 million down payment on a state matching grant program administered through the Department of Employment and Economic Development, that's gonna try to spur on investment at the local and regional levels, so that, so that you're gonna see new investments in broadband infrastructure. It could be high-speed wireless, it could be fiber connectivities. You just want to try to get more Minnesotans connected, because in, in rural parts of the state, we've got lots of great, you know, creative spirit, you know, entrepreneurialism. But if you don't have access to that internet, you're not necessarily able to participate in the 21st century economy. And you talk to, you know, our schools, our hospitals, there's applications in education and healthcare, precision agriculture, e-commerce. Want to make sure that we're extending that opportunity out to all Minnesotans. And so, I, and we had some economists run some numbers for us, and, and they projected a 10 to 1 return on investment for this, for this fund. So, we're hoping that this is gonna stimulate economic growth throughout greater Minnesota. If, if you hear of any of your constituents who might have questions or concerns about access, we have an Office of Broadband Development within the Department of Employment and Economic Development that could offer some additional guidance on this opportunity. Otherwise, I'd be happy to, to, to sit down and have more of a dialogue about this. But that's one of those items that was included in our supplemental budget this year. And then, I should just draw your attention to the fact that this year was a, a bonding year above all else. We had an $850 million bonding package that invested in, in vital infrastructure like sewer and water, roads and bridges, other projects of regional significance, including just the physical plant of the University of Minnesota and Minskew Systems. And having served on the Capital Investment Committee, I can tell you that there was over $3 billion of requests made. We weren't even able to fund a third of it, but it's so important that you keep up with that stuff, because if, if you defer on those maintenance investments, it's just, the problem's gonna get worse and worse and worse. And so, that was a big portion of our activity, and we also were able to, to put some cash behind that, that bonding effort, that capital investment effort. And so, around, let's see, is this 18% here? 16% of our, of our $1.2 billion surplus, about $190 million, was devoted to cash supplements to that capital investment bill. And again, we're talking about projects of regional significance. There were some civic centers that were, that, that received some matching grant funding. Also, $100 million for roads and bridges that otherwise would not get funding. And having been in this job for a couple of years, I, I've heard this several times, that southeastern Minnesota has more bridges than any other place in, in any other region in the state. And a lot of those bridges were put in at the same time. They're gonna need maintenance and repair and replacement at about the same time. So, we've got to make sure that we start, you know, investing in, in, in that repair and that maintenance. And the last thing that we, we focused on here with our budget is just making sure that we, we shored up our reserves in our rainy day fund, and, and ensured that we don't get back on that, that revenue roller coaster and that myopic budgeting that really plagued us for the last decade. So, we put a, a good chunk of change into our reserves, just to absorb the shock of an economic downturn or, or a fiscal shock to, to the state economy. And so, hopefully, you know, folks would, would recognize that we, we by and large were conservative with this surplus, that we wanted to put ourselves in a position to make good decisions and not, not get bogged down in, in, in budget deficits in, in the years to come. So, I'm hoping that that's gonna allow the next legislature to focus on more strategic discussions, like comprehensive tax reform, you know, how we are able to achieve better health care at lower costs, how we're able to, you know, improve our schools. One thing that I'm very interested in is making those high school years more meaningful for more students, whether you're going to college or whether you're going to the workforce. How do you get more out of those four years of, of a high schooler's, you know, educational career? There's a whole host of other things that, that the next legislature will be focusing on. But I am, I'm very optimistic that because of the decisions we've made the last couple of years, we won't be bogged down in the same old budget, you know, problems, and, and, and we won't be in a position where we're passing the buck down to our local units of government, where you're having to make very difficult decisions between essential services or yet another property tax hike. And I, and I hope that that's, that's gonna lead to, to, you know, a period of sustained growth in rural Minnesota, and that's gonna really allow our communities to, to focus on your own strategic discussions and how you position yourself, you know, to capitalize on, on situations that, that, well, in southeastern Minnesota that have a lot of promise, like the, the DMC project in Rochester. I know with the, the investment in Highway 52 corridor upgrades, darn it, I'm really optimistic for this community, and I think that your best years are ahead of you, and, and I hope you're able to, we're all able to focus into the long term, in how we're able to make strategic decisions and investments, and how those will set us up for a period of sustained growth. So, I guess with that said, I, I think I was here last year. I told you my committee assignments. I think they fit the area pretty well, agriculture jobs, rural development, also energy and environment. I serve on the, I serve actually as the Chair of the Fish and Wildlife Subcommittee. So, if anyone has a beef with DNR, or if you think that you've got better ideas on how we should regulate hunting and fishing and promoting hunting and fishing in Minnesota, let me know. Otherwise, I just wanted to thank you for the opportunity to, to serve this area. Of course, as a lifelong Red Wing resident, I, I love southeastern Minnesota. I think we've got a lot to offer, and I really do believe our best days are ahead of us. So, with that said, I don't want to filibuster this meeting. If you have any questions, let me know. Otherwise, my contact information's on that handout. Never hesitate to give me a holler. Even though the legislative session's over, we've got a lot of work that we do in the summer and the fall gearing up for the next session. So, I'd always be happy to work with you, you know, in the interim, as we call it. All right. So, that said, any, any questions or concerns out there?
I just got a quick one for you. I, I, I kind of get a kick out of watching the sessions and stuff and what's going on. And I just want to thank you, because I, I think it was one of the best sessions we've had in years, and it sure was a lot better than five years ago. Our schools were underfunded, our cities were being cut, and the nursing home thing, that was one thing that's so overdue to help with that stuff. So, I, I watched a lot of it, read a lot about it, and I think you guys did a great job, and I, I enjoyed the political jabbing once in a while, but in the end, everybody tried to get something done. So, I think that was a major step. I think Minnesota should be proud. Thank you.
Well, well, thank you. I, you know, darn it, I think we've had a smooth couple of years, and we're never gonna be perfect. You know, there's things that we're gonna have to come back and take a second look at. That's just the nature of the place. But I would be remiss not to add, we got our work done early this year, and that doesn't happen every year. So, I, I appreciate your, you know, your, your positive comments there.
Thank you.
I do also have a, a concern. It's not directly city-related. It's our schools. Every year, we listen to our superintendent talk about the money they receive per, per pupil. And Cannon Falls is usually in that bottom 5% getting 6,000 some per pupil, whereas other schools might get $10,000 or $12,000 per pupil. It would seem to me that that should be equal. It doesn't matter where you live in the state. That amount should be the same, and I'd like the legislature to look at changing that formula so it's, it's more, more fair, equitable to all school districts.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that comment. And I know, you know, we're emerging from a period in which we actually saw funding for our schools decrease 12%. And so, we're kind of trying to get back on our feet here. We've added 1.5% to the funding formula in each of the next two years. But I, I would agree with you. I think that, that traditional thinking has been that urban schools have more challenges than rural schools, and that just isn't true. If it ever was true, it's not true today. And so, we've just got to make sure that we have an equitable funding system that, that allocates resources fairly and, and gives our rural school districts the resources they need to compete with, you know, our, our, our property wealthy districts and perhaps the suburbs or other areas of the state. So, I, I appreciate hearing that. And I gotta tell you, we're not where we need to be yet. We've got to keep pushing that ball as hard as we can.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
All right.
Senator, thanks for coming in. I enjoyed working with you this year. I look forward to working with you in the, in the future on, on things and concerns, not only with the city, but the county, and whatever we can do to help you. You know, we'll be there to help in any way we can.
Sounds great. And again, thanks for the, the privilege of, of serving the community, and I'll see you all on the 4th of July. Let's hope it's not too hot. So, all right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, that brings us to reports. Mr. Maroni.
Only that I would like you, Mayor, to sign a document or two for me before you leave tonight as fast as possible.
Well, I don't know. You got a quarter?
Thank you. I had a meeting today, contractor on 3/18th, probably be starting out there in the next two weeks, and hopefully wrapped up well before the end of July.
Thanks.
Chief?
The bike race went very well. We had only a few problems with people going through on the barricades. Fourth of July parade will be here before we know it. I just want to remind people, we will be putting out barricades and closing off portions of the route much earlier this year than we have in the past, simply because our staffing level will be down from where we've been in the past. So, we're gonna try to use barricades more than we've used officers this year to, to compensate. So, we're gonna be closing off sections of it sooner, just to get that accomplished. The other thing would be the river. It's flowing very fast, very high. Remind people to stay away from the, the edges of the water. They may be deceptively calm, but it is going at a very good clip underneath the surface. As far as flooding concerns, I'm not seeing anything right now in the levels that would give me that concern. The rainfall, if we continue to the pattern we've been in, with about 20 hours of break in between, it'll stay high, but I don't think it'll be anything that'll result in us having to, to take emergency measures. But if conditions change, certainly I'll keep Ron informed and, and the mayor informed. And if it gets to a critical point as in the past, I'll certainly send something out to, to Council in general. I don't think we're at where we were in 2012, but we certainly are watching it. That's all I have.
Thanks.
I have just a couple of items. One is, we did have a resignation in our Public Works Department. Don Dolling will be going to work for another city and west of here. So, we'll be starting that process of getting the ad put together and so forth to get that going. So, we have, have a, a fill-in towards, by the end of the summer. The second item is, I will be at the League of Minnesota Cities Annual Conference tomorrow through Friday. Still available by email or cellphone. That's all I have.
Lana?
I do have a few documents for you, Mayor, so you can double duty. Also, I just want to remind the city council and everyone that the next city council meeting is going to be held at the Fairgrounds on July 1st. There is free admission to the Fairgrounds that night, so nobody has to worry about paying anything to attend the city council meeting. Also, one thing I did want to ask the city council, did you want to perhaps move the start time up to 6:00 rather than 6:30? There is a Addle of the Bands event at 8:00, which they said they would postpone if our meeting for some reason ran long. But we do have the option that if we want to, we could move it up to 6:00, get done a little bit earlier. It's up to the city council, though.
It isn't gonna be a big meeting, is it, or a lot of an agenda?
I don't know what the agenda looks like yet. It's a little far out. We do have a public hearing that night.
Yeah, we do have the public hearing, the approval.
Yeah, we do have the public hearing, the improvement hearing for.
Second Street.
For Second Street. We have a preliminary improvement hearing.
I don't have a problem with moving it up to six.
No.
Depends on, I don't have a problem, honey. Anybody else?
So it's a consensus, the council, to start the meeting at six o'clock?
Yeah, just remind us.
Okay. We can do that. Thank you.
Anything else? Earl?
I just want to say, the bike race, one of our, one of our residents picked up more than 30 water bottles that were dropped in their yard.
Let's talk to him.
Okay. That's it?
I have nothing.
I have nothing. I just, quick question, Ron, is the emails on the right-turn lanes out there, what I understood on that, it's all back to District Six or something, but it's still being reviewed? Is that right?
Yeah, that's, Dave can probably address that more, but the Ombudsman program that was involved in that.
Right.
I don't want to call it mediation, but it's almost to that point.
The study is underway and there is communication ongoing between SEH and MINDOT on the study itself. So the next, one of the next steps related to the study is Pat Anderson and I have been meeting with MINDOT on the signage program. And it appears that within the next probably two weeks or so, I'm, I'm thinking that Representatives Frum and MINDOT will be here and will invite the various business owners and talk about signage and that type of things. So there's some progress being made.
Okay, but we don't know anything yet on how long it would be or anything.
No, it might be August or, or October before we know anything on this study and what can be done. I mean, but there, and the way the project's set up, Leroy, it's going to continue on like, it's going to be closed, I mean, at this point.
Yeah.
I mean, and once we get that, then we'll.
Three years to get it done, that, that was a little crazy, wasn't it? I mean, I was kind of hoping for something better.
It'll be done this fall, but I mean, it's not going to be a three-year.
Study will be done and depending what the outcome of the study is, will determine how much additional time after that.
Right.
Thank you.
And I don't have anything else. We'll see everybody at the fair.
Move to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?